I'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. But everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michael, could we get a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you, sir. Any conflict of interest declarations? Seeing none, any changes or deletions to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, moving on. B, public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council's agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Is there anyone in my physical audience that would like to make a public comment? Seeing no hands. And I don't see any hands on the virtual either. So at this point, we'll close public comment. Any communications?
No communications, Mayor.
All right, then we're going to move right into the student DAs on report.
Good evening, everyone. For my report, I have that Senator McGuire is visiting CHS on Friday to talk about portrait of a graduate characteristics and their importance in the school. Students get to put their input on how the new block scheduling is going today. Visiting Committee for Western Association of Schools and Colleges will be at CHS from February 5th to February 8th to review our self-study and give feedback on how CHS can improve. For sports, I have that soccer boys have been playing hard at their past games and scored their first goal of the season at yesterday's game at St. Helena. And boys and girls basketball have been winning, if not all of their games. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. D2, a presentation by the Russian River Watershed Association.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight is a presentation providing an overview of the Russian River Watershed Association or RRWA. Tonight, joining us for the presentation is Andy Rogers. Andy is the, serving as the Executive Director for RRWA. By way of background, the City of Cloverdale is a member of the, of the association. They do provide a number of valuable services to the city. And that's going to be part of the topic that Mr. Rogers is going to cover tonight. So without further ado, I'd like to, if we can ask Mr. Rogers to join us as a panelist and go ahead and start the presentation.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? All right. If you could advance for me, that would be very, that would be wonderful. So I am Andy Rogers. I am Executive Director of the Russian River Watershed Association. Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's really nice to be back talking with the, the City Council about the Russian River Watershed Association. So I'm going to give you a quick overview. This may be new to some of you and others are pretty familiar with the association. And tell you about some of the projects we are working on now and initiatives we're looking at for the next fiscal year. Next slide, please. So I'm going to essentially meet, meet us, talk about the watershed a little bit as the context of our association and our approach to developing regional initiatives with our municipal members and the benefits derived by our members. Next slide. So we've been around for 20 years. It was a coalition put together 20 years ago to address all kinds of water-related issues. And really with the premise that rather than everybody try to figure out everything on their own, we might as well get together, have a small staff to connect both the decision-makers throughout the region and the technical staff throughout the region to do things at lower cost and in a more consistent manner throughout the Russian River watershed. Next slide. So our members are shown here, Cloverdale being a prominent member. And as you see in this map, for members of the public who may not know, but the Russian River watershed is about 1,500 square miles. And it's almost exactly half in Mendocino County and half in Sonoma County. And Cloverdale being obviously in the northern side of Sonoma County. Next slide. So how we are set up is we have the Board of Directors. So each of our 10 member agencies has a council representative or a supervisor, in that case, or a director of the water agency, and they are the decision-makers. And so we have 10 directors on our board in charge of what we do and making the decisions along the way. We have a working group of technical staff from all the member agencies, essentially works on the ground with us to implement our initiatives and projects on behalf of all the member agencies. Our fiscal agent is the City of Cuyahoga. And 100% of our budget comes from the member agencies. And I'll tell you a little bit more about how that works in a second. But it's through a memorandum of understanding that was developed in 2003, really has not changed. We've had a few amendments, but that's about it. And we have a work plan that we're going to, that we're working on right now with all our member agencies that has the executive director services, you know, keeping the lights on, keeping things moving. And then the general benefits projects where all the members benefit and contribute according to a formula evenly. And then special benefit projects where opt-in, opt-out projects. Next slide. So a little more information about for the record here, just the general watershed information. The size, we have two major reservoirs, as you all know. The 110 miles main stem going from headwaters to the sea. And hundreds of creeks and streams and about 360,000 people live and depend on the watershed resources. 10 tribal lands organizations. Next slide. So one of the things that's common to much of what we do in all of our initiatives is we have the watershed and, you know, very self-contained unit. You know, we, we depend on our water, obviously Cloverdale, no different than anybody else. And, but most of the general public thinks of the watershed in terms of roadsmaps. And so if we talked about a certain creek, it'd be better to talk about the roads. So we're trying to connect how the road sheds where they, where they reside on the watershed. Next slide. So we get together a lot and our, it's really a forum. These are public meetings. And so we have our decision-maker board meetings four times a year. And they're open to the public and we have presentations and we have initiatives and we have award ceremonies. And of course, we have consideration of our various initiatives and we get inputs and ideas from our, our board members, which then what information that's shared can go and come back to each of the councils and supervisors. So everybody's learning along with the same, the same time. The technical working group, we have lots of subcommittees around various initiatives that I'll tell you a little bit more about. And lots of meetings, that's the, that's the theme of this slide. Next slide. We, we, there's lots of information to share. And so one of the values to the smaller cities is the, the leveraging of what the larger entities are doing and vice versa, what the expertise that resides in each of the smaller cities is then able to be kind of expanded and broadened throughout the watershed through our work. And we have all kinds of things that we focus on, a lot of outreach education. We facilitate training for both technical staff and for the public. Technical expertise, regulatory compliance, especially with water quality-related initiatives. We advocate on behalf of our members, one of the more important things that we do. And we certainly advocate for, you know, getting grant funding and things like that. And we, we work on a work plan from this, from scratch every single year. So we adapt as we go along. Next slide. And I'm going super fast because I figure if you want me to stop anywhere, you'll, or you'll have me answer questions in a bit. I just don't want to linger too much. Here's some examples, some things might look familiar to you. The second picture over is a, the creek signage that goes throughout the watershed, which was something that Santa Rosa started about 15 years ago. And through RRWA was deployed as a consistent image throughout every city in the watershed. So Cloverdale, no, no exception there. Develop Creek Care Guide for folks who have, who want to know how to better take care of their properties and lands in a, in a water-friendly way. We have the Russian River Friendly Landscape Program for professionals in design and, and all kinds of initiatives and principles associated with that. Next slide. And along the way, of course, the world changes. We have not just economic change, but of course, we have our extreme weather patterns and we adapt as we go along. And we have floods and fires and shot, power shut-offs and all the things that you all are no stranger to and have to deal with on a daily basis. So we're supporting those ebbs and flows of the climate. Next slide. So essentially, the value of RRWA is greater than the sum of its parts. By collaborating, we have fewer staff working on things on behalf of all of the agencies. And we have, we've developed a great track record of programs and so the foundation is very strong. Next slide. I kind of already said this, but our, our signage program may be one of the more visible programs that folks see around town. Next slide. And so I just want to include, I'm definitely not going to read all these bullets, but overall, but I wanted you to have this as in your packet. Kind of, we do a lot of collaboration forums. And as I said before, we advocate on behalf of our member agencies, whether it's concerns with the state regulations or local regulations, or if there's something we like, we want to participate and we want to get funding for it. We can advocate for those things. Have done that in the past, brought money in from the state to help with things that our municipalities need to deal with. Complying with regulations, kind of in a economy of scale and supporting grants. Next slide. I think there's just maybe one more. And we sponsor things like the Steelhead Festival that's coming up on February 11th. And we have, we have the Great Cleanup that happens in September and other kind of organizations and events listed there and outreach. And then we have kind of a group membership on behalf of all the agencies. So it's less expensive, but getting the benefits of being part of a statewide organization. Next slide. And if anybody wanted to contact us, we are both in Mendocino County and Sonoma County. And we're happy to engage with anybody and answer any questions they may have brought, brought to your mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. That was very efficient. All right, I'll bring it to the dais. Any questions, comments? Anyone want to start, have anything to say? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Andy, thank you for that presentation. I just have a couple of things. You shared with us that 360 households are dependent on the Russian River for their water supply. Is that correct?
So that was, that's a rough population number in the, within the watershed boundaries.
Curious, from an agricultural standpoint, how many farmers are dependent upon that Russian River as well?
Oh, I, I would say probably every farmer within the Russian River is also dependent on it.
I, I just think that would be an important statistic to, to further the cause of leaving the river alone. So.
Thank you. I'll add that. I like that.
And then the other thing, from a budget standpoint, what is the annual budget of the association?
Yeah, so the way it works is, so the, our total budget is generally around, I'll just say, use the round number of 600,000. So what that is, is then it's weighted by the size of the operating budget of an agency. So as an example, with that number, Cloverdale's approximate contribution to that is about 38,000 for the year.
And my last question is, will we see you at the Citrus Fair this year?
Oh, you will see RRWA represented there, absolutely. It's a great event.
Well, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. I was hoping to see you in person tonight, but it's just great to see you at all. I just, you know, wanted to comment on, on having served on Russian River Watershed Association. It just, and it's so beneficial for small communities like Cloverdale. We get so much bang for our buck, especially where things like the MS4 permit are concerned and other tasks that are mandated by the state would be something we would have to do on an ad hoc basis. And our membership in Russian River Watershed checks a lot of boxes. And so we get a lot of bang for our bucks. So it was a, it's been a very successful 20 years for Russian, Russian River Watershed Association. I know that probably during COVID, that anniversary sneaked up on everybody a little bit, Andy, but hopefully we'll have a, a chance to, to celebrate the organization and all the contributions that it's made in, in the, in the last 20 years. And my, my only other question would be for City Manager Kelly and of course, our new Public Works Director. If we have made sure to get our Public Works Director and I believe we have a new engineer tech, if they're, if they've been plugged into future meetings.
Our, our new Public Works Director, I know he's been busy getting his feet wet, literally. And this is certainly part of the work plan going forward. We'll be making sure our, both our Public Works Director and Engineering Tech are participants in the meeting along with our council member representative.
I just want to make sure that we don't, we don't bury the lead on the date. If maybe Andy can re-highlight the Steelhead Festival coming up. I know that that's prob, that's already gone out in our newsletter, but it's just important to get that information out. Can you just, can someone repeat the date and time and the location of that Steelhead Festival? If the weather is anything like it is right now, which, you know, knock on wood, we'll either, it'll either hold or we'll get another break in the rain. But it's also, it's always a great event out at Lake Sonoma. But if we could just get that date and time repeated for, for the public, that would be great. It's, it's a great outdoor event, great for kids and families. And I know everybody's looking for ways to, to get out and, and enjoy outdoor events. Have the date handy. I know it's in February. I know it's coming up in February and it's Saturday.
It's, it's February 11th. If I, I hope it's okay that I speak. February 11th and it's from 10 to 4. And it's at the Lake Sonoma, at, at the dam, the facility, the fishery.
Andy, thank you very much for this presentation. It was a very informative and it stayed on topic and went fast. And that's how I like when it's great. Councilmember Bagby talked about bang for the buck. And boy, did she nail it with this one because the environmental work we've been doing along our river in Cloverdale uses one of your Russian River Keeper people, employees on a daily basis. And we actually met for a couple of hours yesterday. And it's just amazing to have them on board with us and to always be willing to help clean up, number one. But then on top of that, be there to protect the environment as we look for the fish, the birds, the bugs, everything we can do to make sure we're keeping ourselves in a wonderful place with our nature. So if there's no other comments from anyone here, any comments from the public? Anyone want to? Small public, so I'm making it pretty opening and loving here. Seeing none, we'll bring it back and just say, Andy, thank you very much for your presentation. And I look forward to seeing you at the Citrus Fair.
Thank you for the invitation.
Okay, next. All right, moving forward to E, Consent Calendar. All items under the Consent Calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council, unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Any items?
I'll move the Consent Calendar.
Perfect. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll start with Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Morganskin?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler? For the record, that was an aye. Vice Mayor?
Aye.
And Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Okay. Moving into new business, G1, Resolution Revising the Current Stage 4 Water Shortage Emergency, Mandating Water Conservation Measures to a Stage 3 and Terminating the Previously Enacted Suspension of New or Enlarged Water System Connections enacted pursuant to Cloverdale Municipal Code Section 13.05.030.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As this agenda item is titled, the request tonight is to revise our current water shortage emergency stage from a stage four down to a stage three. A little bit of background on, on this item and the basis of the request. You're really starting in 2019, the, the region witnessed unusually dry conditions. That, that continued into, into 2020 and 2021. And the council really took a number of proactive actions to, you know, address the very significant drought conditions that we were experiencing in our region and across the state. First, starting in April of 2021, council took action to declare a stage two water shortage emergency. Subsequent to that, there was a number of actions taken at the state to, you know, in response to the drought conditions as they worsened across, across the region and across California. Coming back, we brought forward an updated urban water management plan that added some additional steps to address impact of water shortage, water shortages. There are many reasons for water, potential reasons for water shortages and drought being one of the, the primary reasons for reduction in water. Because of the dire impact of the drought, the governor took really unusual action to enact a, and through the state water board, an emergency curtailment order. The, the curtailment order had significant impacts from an operational perspective and also a management perspective and required that we take a number of actions to preserve our water rights, but also to address the, the, the new emergency requirements. One of the key aspects of that curtailment order was to reduce our water usage to health and safety standards. In, in response to that, we did a lot of homework to validate our water usage, to ensure that our community had adequate access to, to, to water resources and ensure that we, you know, we, we met our needs. We filed the petition with, with the state water board to increase our water allotment under this emergency curtailment order in, intended to again, ensure that we have adequate supplies to meet the needs of our residents and our business community. Subsequent to that, the, there was a request submitted by the state board recognizing the constraints of the various water users within the upper Russian River to consider entering into a voluntary drought sharing agreement. We, we did a lot of homework on reviewing that agreement, participating in the planning process. And ultimately, council did support participating in that, in that voluntary, that voluntary agreement. Why that's particularly important is because that, that voluntary agreement did set a requirement that we meet a 25% reduction in our water usage. And so that, that agreement remains in effect, though the state board hasn't taken action to curtail a lot of the water users because of the water conditions. So since the, kind of those initial impacts of the drought, we started to see some improved conditions, really starting in. conditions, really starting in late 2021, are, and because of the change in some of the operations in Lake Minassino, we saw the, you know, which is our primary water source, we saw some of the reservoir conditions improve. Despite that, the drought conditions continued to prevail across California and even in the region. Lake Sonoma was particularly impacted. But most recently, as you know, council supported a emergency proclamation related to the storm events that we experienced in 20, late 2022 and early 2023. And the storm events brought with them a significant amount of precipitation above what we normally experience as average water use, or water precipitation and rain during this timeframe. Since then, we've seen the target water levels within Lake Minassino be exceeded. And in fact, just last week, we received announcements, or there was announcements made by the Army Corps of Engineers, that they are above the water supply pool and they're now into the flood pool. And as such, and because we're still early in the water year, they are actually releasing water from Lake Minassino. So given all of the background and the, really the improved conditions that we're, we are currently experiencing, and certainly we hope to get more precipitation and maybe more, in a more manageable fashion, we believe it is warranted to consider a reduction in the water shortage emergency from the current stage four, which mandates or requires a 35% reduction across the board to a stage three, which would, which comes with it a 25% reduction in prior year water usage. Really, what we are now doing functionally is not looking at reductions on a year-over-year basis, because we made such significant strides in reducing our water usage. It becomes unattainable if you just do over, year-over-year. So we're really looking at a, kind of a three-year normal average and making sure that we're meeting conservation targets for three, for a normal three-year period. And that was what we set out in the voluntary drought sharing agreement. So it's a long way of saying that the, it's supportable to move to a stage three, it's consistent with the provisions in the voluntary drought, water sharing agreement. Again, it reduces the emergency, in part because of the improved hydrologic conditions that we're experiencing in the watershed. And we certainly hope that if the, you know, continue to improve conditions, or if the existing conditions continue to improve, that we might be able to bring forward further, further reductions in the future. But with that, there's a lot of data that supports the staff's recommendation tonight. Certainly can provide more background and overview, but again, staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution that would reduce the water shortage emergency from a stage four to a stage three. Concurrently, the resolution would also reduce the, or put, set aside the requirement for water meter connections. So it would really allow for both the reduction in the water shortage emergency, but would eliminate the, with the current suspension of new large meter connections. And again, that decision was made by council because of the dire condition we found ourselves in. So given really the improved water conditions, staff does recommend council support the resolution this evening. Happy to entertain any questions council may have on this request.
Thank you, David. Questions, comments?
The item, by title only, after we have public comment, but I mean, I think that, you know, just because I'm interested in going fast. I know for anybody who missed it, today is my birthday, so I'd love to get home. Anyway, but hey, you know, you got to earn that, so, and I probably just jinxed us, so I apologize, everybody. But it was just such a good and thorough report. Our situation has changed. We've gone to flood control, but it's just so important that people continue to understand that the days of free-flowing water in California are over, they're over, they're over everywhere. And we just need to be very careful and cognizant with the actions that we do take. But at the same time, it's start, it's time to, it's time to lift it and de-escalate in the manner recommended by staff. So I'm happy to support this and recommend the item. Once we've had public comment.
I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone in the audience? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and city staff. I appreciate the opportunity to comment. I respected that report. I think it was very comprehensive. I think it's great. It only left me with one question, and that was, what is your communication strategy to get out to the people? And do you have a communication strategy? What is that? To give them the last pointed point that California is no longer a free-flowing water state. Most of what I hear out in the public right now is, you know, we're still rationing water. Why are we still rationing water? I don't think the message is getting out there, and I wanted to suggest that we have some kind of a communication tool to get that out, the way it was stated, that it's going to continue to be this way. Verbiage, I'll leave that to you, but I think people need to have the idea put in their head for real. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can, it's a very good topic. In fact, staff today met, we are planning to bring forward an overview for council on our budget goals. One of our key goals for our two-year budget was the drought response. We, you know, outlined in the agenda report, have put a lot, council has, you know, supported a lot of investments in addressing the impact of the drought. We don't want to lose those investments. We want to continue to build on them, and I think there's a lot of reasons to do so. And so we're going to suggest to council, maybe modify the terminology from drought response to one of water resiliency, and so we can continue to look at opportunities to enhance water conservation in our community, improve water usage, and seek alternative supplies, again, in a manner that's, you know, enables our community to respond. We know droughts are going to come again, there's been quite a history. So we want to, we want to hit this head-on and be ready for the next event when, when it comes, and it'll probably be sooner rather than later.
Any other public comment? And no hands on the virtual? All right, we'll bring it back to the dais. David, I look forward to that coming forward, so we can get council support. Any other comments or questions?
Just a further comment, too. And I, it's just, it's a happy accident that Russian River Watershed was here presenting this evening, because that is actually one of the major, one of our partners in communicating everything water with our community, and that's why it's so important for the city and the member agencies to promote this, the Steelhead Festival, to come by and visit the Russian River Watershed booth at the Citrus Fair, and, you know, other times during the year when they're, they're present in the community. But maybe the city manager can also kind of talk about the strategies with using the Cloverdale newsletter, and also communicating with the ratepayers through the water bill, because that's also a very effective, one of the, one of the very effective tools that we have.
Absolutely, Councilmember Bagby. You know, we, we as staff really endeavor to be timely with our communication regarding, you know, our current water conditions, and we'll, we'll continue to push out, you know, very current updates and work with our partners on, you know, appropriate marketing information, branding information around, you know, water conservation, so we can continue to build that into, to our processes.
Maybe when we agendize it in the future, too, the other item we might want to just consider as far as city operations are concerned, and something we definitely touched on in the past at the, at the council, is that every time you move water, it costs energy. And so the more efficient we are, the less our, our energy bill goes up. So that's just something that is important. It's just an important message to help our ratepayers understand the connection between water, water use and energy. And that's just, that's kind of my, and so we just might want to make that part of the discussion in the future. And with that, I'm, yeah, again, I'm just happy to, I'm happy to move the item and recommend the item by title only, if I may.
Absolutely, please.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, amending the current stage four water shortage emergency to a stage three water shortage emergency requiring mandatory rationing with a water reduction of 25% from 2020 water use pursuant to Chapter 13.05, Conservation of Water Supply of the Cloverdale Municipal Code, and terminating the previously enacted suspension of new or enlarged water system connections due to drought.
Perfect. Roll call when you're ready, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Morganstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
And Mayor Lance?
Aye.
And that is a 5-0 vote. G2, Letter of Interest Submitted to the Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers Association for City Selection Committee and Board of Directors Appointments.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mayor. Away at background, the City of Cloverdale is a member of the Sonoma County Mayor and Councilmembers Association. That association is responsible for recommending for appointment and/or appointing various members to regional boards. The chair city currently is the City of Healdsburg. There are a number of board positions open, as well as positions open on the City Selection Committee, which is ultimately made by the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors. At the next Mayor and Councilmembers Association meeting, the executive committee that consists of the mayors from each city will be requested to vote on appointments to those regional boards. In support of that process, the chair city sends out to all city council members within Sonoma County a request for letters of interest. And that was done by the city clerk for, for City of Healdsburg. And in response to that, there was a number of letters received in, indicating letters of, you know, indicating individual council members' interests in participating in various roles. Included in your packet is an outline of those open positions and the letters of interest received. And really, the direction tonight is to give your direction to the mayor, so that the mayor or, or, you know, it could be the vice mayor or attending council member, be able to vote on behalf of the council in support of the council's recommended appointment to the City Selection Committee and, and the various board of director positions. So in some cases, it's fairly easy, because there was maybe one letter of interest received, but in some instances, there were multiple letters of interest. For instance, the LAFCO, there's, there's four letters of interest and really three, three positions. It's really at the council's pleasure on how you'd like to walk through this. And again, the intent tonight is to give direction to the mayor in terms of the voting direction for attendance at the next Mayor and Councilmembers Association meeting scheduled, and I believe it is Thursday, February 9th. So happy to walk through this with, with the council. Really, it's your pleasure, Mayor.
Thank you, David. There is only two that we really need to make a decision on, unless there's people we don't like, so maybe we just focus on the two.
Oh, sorry, yeah, just a question. I think we can, if, in, memory is not, I'm just not remembering. I don't think we even should be voting on one and, and, sorry, the first one, on the City Select Committee area, air quality, because we're not a member of that district, we're a member of the Northern So, so I think we can strike that, if I'm not mistaken. City Manager.
If we don't strike it and they ask us, that we're okay with it?
There you go. And I know that they're not going to want to hear about us from the North Bay Division of the League of California Cities, because we're not part of that division either. So I'm certain we won't be voting on that, because we're not in that division. So that, those are just the two, might just make our job a little easier if we, there is only one, but we don't really need to have a lot of discussion about either of those, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're absolutely right, Councilmember Bagby, but it could be an individual who we would prefer not to endorse as well, based on past public performance in the community. So I think we should at least review them to see if anybody knows anything about them, because there's some names here, quite frankly, I don't recognize. So that's my two cents. I think we need to just kick their name around a little bit.
Would you guys like it if I just went through the list and you can, Councilmember Bagby, you can speak up on it, saying, you know, we shouldn't be voting on this one, that way just, it's very clear to me or Vice Mayor.
I'm happy to just go through it chronologically, or, yeah.
Exactly. So if we went City Selection Committee, number one, there's only one person, would we support if we were to vote on that one? Because, like you said.
Well, is he, is he new, Melanie?
I think he was elected in 2020. Yeah. He's, and he's a very good council member. I absolutely am happy, I'm surprised that he was the only applicant for that, because, but, you know, Teresa did a fabulous job on that board for us, and it's a, it's a, they meet in San Francisco, it's actually huge, Oakland and San Francisco, it's a huge district. And I think that he has a very strong background for this, so, yeah, we'll save the drama for lower down the list.
Number two, the LAFCO. There's four people for one position.
Just of the, of the four, I know the two, if I'll just put my two cents in, and we can have a discussion. I know Sandra from Sonoma very well. Sonoma apparently has not held this position in over 20 years. She has been very active in, she has a lot of support amongst the fire chiefs and the strongly supported in the fire district, and Sonoma has some very key decisions coming up in relation to annexations at LAFCO, as well as the future of the Springs. And I think it, as another small city that doesn't get a lot of attention on regional boards like this, I feel like I want to support Sonoma having a strong voice on, on LAFCO. And then, second on the list, who I definitely would recommend would be Susan Harvey. I've worked very closely with her, both at the League of Cities and on Zero A Sonoma, and her institutional knowledge of land issues, urban growth boundaries, I think would be really essential. Mark Landman is vacating, is vacating that position for Katati, and those are big shoes to fill. I also received an update that the two appointees to LAFCO from the county are Supervisor Goran and Supervisor Gore. I know that, I'm sure that Santa Rosa wants to have a presence on LAFCO, but I think that with the two supervisors who have pretty big chunks of Santa Rosa, and a former Santa Rosa council member will be representing Santa Rosa pretty strongly. LAFCO is a very serious, very hefty assignment, and while I'm absolutely all for new, brand-new council members just diving in and digging in, I think that with the, what LAFCO board is going to be considering in the next couple of years, I'd really like to see two of our strongest and most seasoned council members be placed on that. So that's just, that's who I'm recommending. And I, again, I, great to see, you know, the new council members throw, throw their names in, but it's a pretty serious board. I'd like to see some more serious council members, and I think that that's, that's my recommendation.
Before we say anything else, David, I have a quick question. It says there's two positions plus an alternate, but on the letters of interest, it says there's only one open position. So I just want to make it clear how many we're selecting. Can Michael or?
That was my question, too.
I just want to confirm. I'm pretty sure it's two and an alternate, but I want to make, because there's three that left, so.
Yeah. And that's the thing, is we had such, we had such turnover in the last election, you know, that's why I think it's really important to get some seasoned folks into that board who, so that it's, everybody is starting. who, so that it's, everybody is starting from, from scratch, so.
So what we received, what else I can do with that microphone? What we received is that it's two seats and an alternate, is what we received from Rena Allen, who's the city clerk. Thank you, sir. So two seats plus an alternate. Councilmember Wheeler?
You know, the person that, for the LAFCO, the one that, that sticks out for me is Jeff Okrapke. And the reason being is, you know, when we were down there in the, went through the Tubbs Fire and all that went down, he was one of the first people, he jumped up, kind of took the lead on everything down there, between being a block captain, between coordinating things. And he just took a leadership role right away, and it's just continued into his, into his council seat now. So I think he would be good on that. And the other one, like Councilman Bagby said, was Sandra Lowe in Sonoma, and all of her work with the fire chiefs and stuff. I believe that's, that's a pretty heavy hitter for that local, you know, the LAFCO. And I think that's the, the second, if we're going for two seats, which I think we are, I think Jeff Okrapke and Sandra Lowe would be my two.
You know, I, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
I, I have to concur with you, Brian. Actually, I was talking to Robert Taylor, who is on the fire board here in Cloverdale, and he was telling me that the Sonoma County Fire Chiefs nominating those two individuals, Sandra and Jeff. So I would support that as well.
Councilmember Morganstern?
I really don't have any recommendations. I've read the letters over and over again, so I'm going to leave it up to the rest of you, because I don't know these people, and I, I couldn't really tell from their letters what they're all about.
I, I, I as well had reached out to the fire, and absolutely Sandra was number one on their list by a, a long shot. I don't have real definite, you know, yes or no on Susan or Jeff, so I, I mean, I'll, you two seem to know them better.
I, I would love to see Jeff be the alternate, because I, I think that LAFCO is a very heavy duty, and it, absolutely with, with Jeff's ability, I, I agree. I'm just so impressed with, with everything he's done. He's really stepped up to a leadership role. I know that Susan can hit the ground running, though, and I think that with what they've got on their agenda, I know I would want to start as an alternate on LAFCO, just personally, and sort of get some of the experience under my belt, and I think it might be, it might be helpful for Jeff. That's what, that's what I would recommend.
I, I, I'll still stick with my recommendation. You know, Jeff's, like Brian had said, you know, the Tubbs Fire, he was there, I mean, he's endorsed by the fire chiefs. He'd be my first pick, along with Sandra.
I'll, I'll, I'll move, I'm, sorry, do you want to make a comment?
No, go ahead, it's okay.
I, I just would, I'm, I'm just going to go ahead and, and make a motion that we, we recommend Sandra and Susan and Jeff as the alternate, and if there's, um, uh, alternate opinions, that, that's, that's what we're here for.
Okay, with that, would we have a second to support? Do we have a alternate motion?
Yes. For the point of record, was there no second?
There was no second, so it died.
I would like to make a nomination of, of both Sandra and Jeff be appointed to the open seats.
Is there a motion for the alternate?
Um.
Friendly amendment, if I may.
Susan would be good.
Okay. And Susan for the alternate.
Second that.
Okay, so we have a second. I don't, I know this isn't like an official vote here, so I'm not going to ask you to do it, Michael. So, I'll, I'll support it as well, since we already have the two, and we'll just move forward. So we have Sandra's number one, Susan's number two, and Jeff is listed as the alternate.
No, Jeff is not listed.
I'm sorry. Jeff is number two, and Susan is the alter, I said, I'm sorry, I wrote them in.
So, and, and actually, could, and just because you're, you might have to do a little horse trading in the room, can we all agree that some, those three in some configuration are our choices?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we always give the mayor the flexibility of changing his vote at the table.
Right, that's what that's intended for, yeah. It's just that, that's the flexibility.
Not, not just this one, but any of them.
But that, that, these are the three, that's our order.
That's our, that's our order, and you may have to do some horse trading in the room, yeah.
One, two, three, got it. Thank you, I appreciate that. Next one is going to be the Agon Open Space District, myself and Mark Staff from Santa Rosa.
I think it's one and.
Just one open position.
I, I think we probably want to recommend, um, our city representative.
Sure?
You know, you know what you're getting into, so.
I do, I do, unfortunately, I do.
I'll support that.
I support that.
So we have, okay, so that works. Thank you, I appreciate that. I really appreciate your support. And that's the only one, the other one that we have, so we're good, right? Is there anyone on the rest of the list that people would say, do not vote for, or do not support? Seeing all heads shaking, oh, no. Okay, perfect, love it, that's easy. Lot easier than last time.
To save, I think Santa Rosa went eight rounds. City of Santa Rosa went eight rounds on this, so that was pretty good. Pretty smug.
I love it. All right. Subcommittee reports.
What about?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm a little confused. Item number four, Councilmember Bagby, um, her term is up February of this year.
I, I think I put a letter in.
I mean, we'd like to support you, but we.
Wait, one moment. Vice Mayor Walter, can you go into the microphone a little bit more?
On, on number four, she's the only person that put in a letter for that one position, so that's why I said if we, if there's anyone we don't support, let us know.
If you would like to vote to not support me.
I would.
I guess you could do that right now, or Chris Rogers of Santa Rosa.
I guess we'll support you too. Okay. Good to move forward, everyone. Next is our subcommittee reports. We really don't have anything at this point, because we haven't scheduled, so we'll move past it. Council reports, Councilmember Bagby sent hers in in writing. Does anyone have anything? Councilmember Wheeler, anything?
I just want to mention, we went up to, on the 18th through the 20th, up there to Sacramento to the, the new council member mayor academy. Great networking, met a lot of, a lot of folks, and made a lot of connections up there. There was some, some really good information passed up there, and I just wanted to mention, I appreciate that. That was, that was not only a fun time to meet other people up there, but really informative, so thank you.
So glad to hear that our council was well represented, and I'd actually planned to go, and then I realized that I had been sent to the date for the Area Agency on Aging Needs Assessment at the Senior Center before they had even, before the league had even sent that date out. And I, you know, I was, I kind of half joked that the Senior Center would probably put a hit on me if they didn't. The very nice people at Senior Center probably would have gotten very upset if I had not shown up for that. And I just want to mention, too, that Dana was able to participate. It was really a great after, I guess it was a morning, it was almost a two third, two hour meeting where a member of the board from the Area Agency on Aging and staff came up and did a needs assessment for Cloverdale and surrounding areas. And so hopefully, we'll be getting a, a report on that and an update on that. But that's the only reason I didn't go out of Sacramento with, with you guys, is that I would have gotten in really big trouble with people who had already nailed down that date with me. So I'm glad that, I'm glad that you got a lot out of that league, New Mayors and Council Members Meeting, because that is where you, you really get solid training on, on how to be a council member. So thanks for, thanks for doing it, and for, you know, standing up and, and serving in that manner. And I understand that, yeah, Kevin and our city clerk, Mike Maloney, were able to go as well. So thanks so much for participating and representing our community there.
Vice Mayor?
I'm fine, thank you.
Councilmember Morganstern?
I just want to say that I found Sacramento also to be a very positive educational experience, and I'm glad I went.
Thank you. Yeah, it was absolutely that. You know, it was great to do the, the team building with Michael and Kevin and, and the new council members. And they really had to dive in with a lot of basic understandings, but they, it's, it's a lot when you have never been on a city council or any, any board or council whatsoever. The networking is obviously the best part of it, because you really get to learn who the people are in your county and all of Northern California at that. So it, it worked out very well, met a lot of good people, had a lot of good discussions. But what's nice is, I also got to learn who my staff is here, or our staff is here, and our council members, with them coming in new. Great picture, Michael, thank you. So I don't know if you guys can see that there, but that's great.
I noticed that you have gotten way, you got way better weather than I've had in the past, so.
It was, it, it, you can't tell there that it's about 40 degrees.
It's probably up 45 degrees, 40, 45 degrees, but still, it's better than when it, we've been slashing around out, outside, so.
It was just so nice to see them get the basic knowledge, and then we get the, the basic understanding of each other as, as relationships, and, you know, learning how to, to work with each other, and we can see each other on a personal level before we go and debate. So now we can have respect for each other throughout the, the term that we're going to be here, even when, when we disagree. So it's, it's a great place to go. I hope that, hope and recommend that we all go at some point, or more of these types of conferences for the team building that we, that we all, all need, so.
You know, it's been a while since I, I've been to the new council members and, and mayor's training, but the one thing that I remember today, and I try never to forget it, is that I was elected. I wasn't anointed. So represent your constituency, that's, that's what it's all about.
Hundred percent, thank you. All right, no letters of support or opposition of anything currently? City Manager report?
Mayor, members of council, just to report out on a couple of things, I'm going to share with council that last week, we had our initial meeting with the PG&E team as well as Centrica on our, what's called our, our turnkey program. The, the kind of critical component of that project is our AMI, Advanced Metering Infrastructure Project. So we are going to be working, we have a very aggressive schedule to replace all of our customers' water meters within the city. So we, we're going to be working, working away on that project. We'll, we'll be sharing with council, you know, a lot of updates on the status of that project, but just wanted to let you know that we did, we did kickstart that meeting, or that, that planning process, and we'll be, we'll be working very quickly over the coming months to implement the meter project amongst the other elements of that, that effort. Our city clerk, Mike, is working with our new council members, Councilmember Wheeler and Councilmember Morganstern, on their bios on our website, and it's just a good time, if you want to revisit your bios, to take a look at if there's any, any updated information that you want to include, to get that to Mike, and he'll get that updated. We're, we're working on getting a photographer arranged, so we can get new council member photographs as well. Last but not least, I, in working on a scope of work, I did receive the direction from council to move forward with planning a retreat. So I'm working on a scope of work with Talia to assist council and staff on a, on a formal retreat. Will work with all of you on identifying a, a date that works for all of your, all of your busy schedules, of course. And part of that scope, I asked Talia to provide any, any leadership training that council members may want on an individual or one-on-one basis, or coaching. I think coaching is always valuable, so just let me know if you're interested, and I'll, I'll share that with Talia, and we can arrange for that on an individual basis. So that, that concludes my report, Mayor, members of council.
Thank you, David. Jose, before you go, I'm going to, I should mention a couple of things. While I was at that conference, I, I should have talked about this, we had a pretty large meeting with the county, and Cloverdale was well represented regarding mental health and behavioral health, and things like care court, fact court, and different programs that the county has, that Cloverdale has not been able to benefit from in the, in the, in the recent past, we'll just leave it at that. And we, as, we have some individuals in town that we know need a lot of help, and so our chief and our city staff has been advocating very loudly at this point to get these individuals' help and pushing very hard. And I just wanted to say that we were the only city that really showed up to that meeting, and we showed up in force, and we made it very clear that we need their help, and we pay for this, and, and they heard it, I think. So we've had them trying different things at this point to help us out, we'll, we'll see where it goes, but at this point, I just wanted everyone to know that we are working very hard, and the chief and David and everyone else has been pushing hard. The other thing we did yesterday, we met at the River Park, and I, I thought I should mention this, because the county is working with the city to basically make the River Park more usable, clean it up, beautify it, and make it more manageable, and prepare it for fire. And we're planning, the, two years ago, we started in August, one year ago, we started in June, and this year, we started in January. So we're doing it right. We're finally getting caught up to where we need to be, and making it efficient and safe to be a, a soft block for the fires coming from the east to the west into Cloverdale. Sorry, I just, I meant to say those and I lost it, so.
Well, I'll be, I'll be quick, Mayor, just. Let me tell you what, let me not use this one. I better be good with what I'm going to say, right? Just wanted to make sure, I know that the, our new council members and Mayor went to the new mayors and councils conference in Sacramento. Now that you've been kind of, kind of listening to the assembly bill, you know, 1234 training and other trainings, my offer, please, anything that doesn't kind of, you know, any questions? I know that the law is a lot of times complicated, and there's a lot of it, especially when you do one of those trainings that's only for two hours and it covers material that could be a week. Any questions, anything like that, obviously, please contact me with, you know, any, any questions, no matter how small, I'm definitely available. And.
Okay, as, as council took action at your last meeting to declare a local emergency, staff's still continuing to compile expenses related to the storm response. One of the things we're looking at very closely, we, we had a water main break on, on Allen Avenue on, on Wednesday. Want to acknowledge the work that our, our team put in to respond to that water leak. We're going to look at whether the storms had, had any contribution to the impact of that, that failure in our water line. We do want to acknowledge that on the 19th of last week, while our council members were away, I was actually meeting with Councilmember Bagby in my office when we felt the impact of the earthquake. So it's a good reminder for the community to be prepared for an earthquake. But, you know, the, the storm impacts and, and soil fairly moist, coupled with the earthquake, I don't think boded well for some of our older water lines, and, you know, suggests that, you know, the storm did contribute to the impact, to that, to that failure. But again, I want to acknowledge our water team and our new public works director getting out there at midnight and working, you know, 18 hours plus to fix that water leak as promptly as we could. So we'll be looking at that closely in response to the storm. With respect to current impacts to water supply, current reports are we're about 155% of average for rainfall at this particular point in time. Hopefully, we'll get, we'll continue to get some additional precipitation. We've got about 34 inches, so we're really well above our typical average, which would be around 22 inches at this time of year. Again, we, we are now in that flood control pool in Lake Minasino, so we saw the, the reservoir level spike. It's already, because it's, it's now under the forecast informed reservoir operations by the Army Corps, they're now releasing to bring those water levels down, just to create some capacity or allow for some capacity for future storms. And hopefully, hopefully, that's not water loss. We, we really do get some more water back in the reservoir, and it fills us back up. And Lake Sonoma, which in, on December 12th was at about its lowest level ever, since it was originally filled, is, we're, we're almost, almost back up to 100% of the water supply pool. So our two reservoirs are in, in really, really good shape. With respect to COVID-19 emergency. With respect to COVID-19 emergency, nothing to report.
Thank you, David, I appreciate that. Moving on to council direction on any future agenda items.
I'd like to just mention and thank our, our new public works director and our staff. We have a, an incredible staff, and I just want to make it really clear that, you know, they, they respond, and honestly, they perform miracles on a pretty regular basis, but I don't want to, I don't want them to think that, I don't want to speak, I don't want to speak for the rest of the, the council, but hopefully, there would be support for, for this amongst the council. I don't want to take that for granted. We can't just respond, constantly respond to emergencies. We, we have a, a clear need to address the aging infrastructure in this city, and I want, I'm committed to making sure that, that we do do that. And that we appreciate the hard work of our, of our guys who are out there at midnight. Let's make that less common. So, as far as future agenda items, I just want to make sure that, that, that at least I'm putting my input in. We keep that at the, the top of our list and that that's on the discussion when we're setting our, our future priorities. You know, we can get very comfortable in saying, oh, well, great, the drought's over when it's raining, or gee, we don't have a water problem when it's, when we're, we're in a drought. So, we want to make sure that we're really taking a, a balanced, clear-eyed, fact-based approach at where we are with our infrastructure and make sure that, out of respect for our crew, that we're making the repairs and we're moving forward with our capital improvement projects, we're moving forward with that. So, as a, as a future agenda item, I just want to let them know that we recognize what the situation is, and we don't, we don't want to take you for granted. And thanks for being out there in, at midnight in your, in your wellies and everybody who responded out of emergency, we really do appreciate you, but let's not take it for granted. Let's make sure that, that we're moving forward with, with addressing our infrastructure issues. And hopefully, there's support for that amongst the rest of the council.
Absolutely, well said. Go ahead, anyone else?
I just wanted to say the same thing, Derek. Thank you very much for your crew out there and the city guys, and I think that Cloverdale's pretty fortunate to have such a wealth of knowledge with the crew that we do have, which is why they can get in there and, and, and get these fixes done in a pretty rapid manner. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
All right. Any future agenda items from anyone else? Seeing none, meeting is adjourned at 7:08. Thank you for attending, appreciate it.